Good evening, welcome to the Village Board meeting for the Village Board of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, February 28th, so if you're watching live on Monday, February 28th, we encourage you to call in at 769-1677 if you have comments or questions. I sincerely apologize, we're half an hour behind schedule, and for those of you who have been waiting, we are sorry. We had a community meeting with residents of the Maple Hill neighborhood that began at 7:00 and ran until 8:30, talking about our draft plan, considering the possibility that we might sell this building, 80 Wheeler Avenue, to a private owner and establish a new village hall at the Methodist Church site at Bedford Road and Maple Hill, and then sell the old rec center, which is at Bedford Road and Great Oak Lane, to the Methodist Church. So, that three-way real estate scheme is a strategy we have been looking at because we think it has the potential to reduce our long-term costs of government by putting this building back on the tax rolls to generate ongoing income and reducing our annual operating costs up at Maple Hill. For those who haven't heard about it, I will caution you that we do not intend to move the police department, they would remain in this building on a leaseback deal while we continue to review exactly what our long-term needs are. So, that is a discussion that you can hear more about in the future, and there are also a couple of PCTV sessions, including the most recent call-in session that I did on PCTV that you can see at PCTV76.org on demand if you wanted to hear more about it. So, I thank you for your patience, we're starting later than expected. A couple of things to report to everybody, and the first is, many of you may have already received a letter regarding changes in the water billing cycle. Patty, do you want to explain that?
Oh, I'd be happy to, thank you. We have just completed a change to the quarterly billing cycle. It will affect the timing of when our water customers receive future bills. Up until this time, all bills were received in February, May, August, and November. Everybody paid at the same time, the same quarters. We are cycling in a different way in order to have our fiscal year aligned with our collections. It has not done that in the past. So, when we sent out a May bill, we had to estimate what the revenue would be because our fiscal year closed May 31, and it wasn't the best of situations for us from a point of view of dealing with some of our accounting issues. So, starting next month, a third of our water customers will get a bill that will be an abbreviated bill, just to start a recycling. Those that get bills in March and April will have small bills because it's just a point of consumption from their February read going forward. Everybody then will be back on a cyclical, three-month cycle. So, people will not get bills every month, they'll still get quarterly bills, we'll be reading every month, we'll be in collection every month, we'll be changing the way we do things administratively. And that's just a point I wanted to make. We sent notices out, so people will have those, and if anybody has questions, just give us a call.
So, it's simply an effort to rethink how we do things and to try to spread out the work more evenly and avoid the situation where we have too much to do at some points in time and not enough at others. So, if you get a water bill sooner than you expected, it will be lower than you expected.
Right. That's true, too.
The second item we had on our agenda is the one I referred to a short while ago, and that is updated, an update on the draft proposal for us to purchase the Methodist Church as a potential new village hall. And, as I described to the neighbors who were here interested in that during our work session, the key piece of all of this, on the economic side, is the question of what this building, 80 Wheeler Avenue, would be worth to a potential buyer. And so, we have been working pretty hard to develop some interest in this building in order to find out what we might be able to sell it for, and I can report that we've had, I guess, five or six different potential buyers slash developers come through this building in the last two weeks, and one who had visited earlier. We have a couple of numbers on the table that would suggest to us that it is promising to think about doing this, and it's worth continuing to work on it. But, as we said to the neighbors earlier today, our purpose in doing this is to save money. We are not able to even consider it if we don't in the end produce a situation where we save money. So, the Methodist Church is interested in buying the rec center, which is a potentially good solution to that building that has been vacant for a good long time. There were a number of residents from the Sunnyside and Bedford neighborhood in the community meeting as well, who expressed some concerns about the impacts on their neighborhood associated with the church establishing itself on Bedford Road. So, that obviously is a matter that would be a source of discussion during the site plan review for the church's potential to purchase the rec center at Bedford Road and Great Oak Lane. And, there were also a number of concerns raised about the use of the old Methodist Church site for a potential new village hall. Part of that is the, I think, likelihood that if the village were to buy this property, we would populate the old church as a village hall and use the parking lot space, but the wooded parcel, that is, to the north of the existing church, would likely be subdivided in its own compliant manner for single-family homes, and we would sell those lots as a means of buffering the expense of the purchase. So, obviously, lots of people will have lots of concerns about that. People are concerned about noise and activity, nighttime activity, and traffic, particularly at what many people describe, and understandably so, as a somewhat problematic intersection at Bedford Road and Maple Hill. So, anybody who has any comments or concerns, interests in that at all, is welcome to weigh in on it in the form of an email or a letter. I think Patty Dwyer, the Village Administrator, is the best place to have those things come so that everything lands in the same place, and will be available to all the board members to take a look. But, in the meanwhile, what I can report is that we are pushing a couple of these potential buyers who seem to have the greatest amount of interest to come back to us with a serious offer, so that we can then start the process of putting the rest of the deal into more concrete terms. So, that's where we stand on that. Okay? Hello?
Wait, hold on. Go ahead.
You there?
Yes.
State your name, and let us know what you're asking.
Yes, my name is Kevin Martin, Mayor of Mendon.
Hey, Kevin.
Good, good. Quick, two questions. On the water bill, wasn't that a bond that Mayor and owner did in 1995? It was supposed to be a 15-year bond?
There was a bond associated with our purchase into the water treatment plant. I'm not sure whether it was '95 or later.
I would like to look into it. It was either '95 or '94. There was supposed to be a 15-year bond on us.
Well, we've had a number of costs that are associated with the water system. There was the relining of the pipes and the continued projects that we have had for that. We recently had a fairly big capital expense to spend money on the water tanks up on top of the hill, and that turned out to be a seven-figure project as well. The last piece of it that's on the table right now is the last and oldest piece of the water system that hasn't been renewed, and that is an old piece of water main that is on Broadway and Bedford Road in the old village, and that looks like it's also a million-plus piece. So, long story short, we look at the bonds annually in the budget process, and in fact, we're coming into the budget process right now, but there have been new bonds issued since then, and at the point at which some of these retire. Obviously, that's a benefit, but we also have some new expenses coming. A piece of the water bond was done through a state system, and we recently have been in discussion with them about whether there's an opportunity to refinance the whole package of bonds, which include ours and many other municipalities, and therefore get a lower interest rate. It wasn't certain that that was possible, but the state agency that is responsible for that is looking into that right now.
Okay, good. One more question, too. You're looking at getting rid of selling the village hall and moving to the church. Is there any possibility you could lock into a 40-year lease with the police department? Because the expenses on your expense for rent, once the new owner sees the building, are just going to offset his mortgage payment by what he's going to be charged in the village?
Well, obviously, the potential to sell this building is going to be a two-part issue, a two-part negotiation. One is what would a buyer pay for it, and the second is what would a buyer charge us for the police department to be here? I think that we would not wish to engage in any long-term leases that couldn't be broken. My guess is that the negotiation would be more in the nature of a specified lease with an option to renew annually at some specified rate.
Also, is it also looked into how much the village spent to make that a police station, make a police department with this housing cell and everything else, and if it'll be worthy to put it, price-wise, to put it into the Methodist Church if they don't move, it might just cost way too much money to upgrade it over there?
I mean, I think none of us envision moving the police department to the Methodist Church, both because of the residential neighborhood and because of the nature of the space available to us there. So, ultimately, the question is, what would it cost us to lease the existing police station from a new owner on an ongoing basis? At the same time, we're also in discussions about how police services may look different in the coming years, and as every community is, talking about shared services, talking about consolidation, trying to kick the tires of every possible option.
Is there anything in the works for the old ambulance station?
The ambulance building is vacant now because the ambulance corps has moved to Thornwood. And, we are in the process right now of working on a plan to knock out the garage doors and replace them with a storefront and make some modest improvements, total cost of about $75,000 to that building, which would allow us to use it as the offices for the rec center, for the rec department, and also use the two garage bays as a recreation room. In the event that the Methodist Church project comes to the fore, we would have to rethink how that all gets used, but the $75,000 to be spent on the ambulance corps building is coming out of a Parks and Rec escrow fund. So, we have that money already in hand.
Already in hand.
And we're feeling pretty confident that whatever happens on any front, having that ambulance corps building improved as useful space right next to our fields is a good investment for the long haul.
Beautiful. All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate the call.
Have a good night.
And then, lastly, we're in the midst now of working on the draft budget that will be announced next month. Our village fiscal year is June 1 through May 31, so we are coming in the last quarter here of our existing fiscal year. And Patty, do you want to just update what you envision in terms of the schedule here when we'll make these presentations?
Sure, yeah. Under finance law, there's a requirement to file a budget, a tentative budget, by the 20th of March. Although, I would expect to have a draft to the Village Board next Monday night, that'll give us at least a month before our official public hearing date has to be held, which is by April 15th. So, what we're looking at is a public viewing document by the 20th of March, a public hearing by April 15th, by all accounts with our schedule, that'll probably be April 11th. And then, again, the state sets the parameters by the time in which the village must adopt a budget, and we have until the 1st of May to do that. So, assuming everything looks in order, there'd be a budget resolution on the 25th of April for adoption. So, we have a short window to work within, but we should be setting our work sessions starting next Monday night all through the month of April, until April 25th, where hopefully we'll be informed to adopt a budget.
Okay, so, you can expect to be hearing more about the budget at every meeting here on in, until the point at which we adopt it, towards the end of April. But, we will also put that draft budget up on the website at Pleasantville-NY.gov as soon as we have that in place, so that everybody who's interested can go through it, either looking at the broad categories or even looking at it line by line. We'll be going through the process that this board has gone through every year for many, many years, and that is to go through every department's budget on a line-by-line basis and to farm out pieces of it to each of the trustees who have had an involvement with it over past years, to work on it with the individual department head. So, we suffer the same difficulties that every other town suffers, and that is that we are, been hit with quite a few tax grievances that have reduced the overall tax base, and that automatically increases taxes even without an increase in expense. And we're being hit pretty hard by another roughly 37% increase in our pension costs from New York State, that coming on top of last year's roughly 60% increase in pension costs. So, there are a whole series of ways in which budget, the budget is put under extra stress. So, we're working hard on it, we'll have more to say on it in the next several weeks. We'll get that up on the web at Pleasantville-NY.gov, and we'll invite everybody's comments at the point at which we post that draft budget. We'll be working on it and trying to reduce expenses, reduce expenses, and reduce whatever the tax increase may be over the next six weeks. So, more on that soon. Any members of the audience have anything to say? All right, we're going to run through our resolutions because we have a bunch of things to do in work session, including the Board of PCTV, which is here to talk about their budget and their activities. So, Steve, number 22.
Resolved the pre-checked registered date of February 28, 2011, covering the check numbers 68653268744 has been reviewed and are hereby approved as listed below. General Fund, $185,418.64. Water Fund, $107,503.69. Capital Fund, $61,301. Refuge Bond, $17,802.1. Pool Fund, $3,156.77. Trust and Agency, $9,478.75, for a total of $384,660.86.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, in the 22.
The resolved, the Board of Trustees has reviewed the minutes of the meeting held on Monday, February 14th, and they are hereby approved.
Is there a second? Second. Comments, corrections? Two things worth reminding everyone again that are memorialized in these minutes, and the first is that we have identified the date for the Pleasantville Music Festival next year, this year, which is Saturday, July 9. So, mark your calendar Saturday, July 9 for the Pleasantville Music Festival. And the other piece that I mentioned in my remarks last time, and is worthy of mentioning again, is that we recently honored Russ Tompkins, member of the Pioneer Hook and Ladder Company of the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department, on the occasion of his 70th anniversary of continuous service for the fire department. So, no typo there, 7-0, 70 consecutive years as a fireman, as a captain, as a chief, as a fire commissioner, and now as a senior member. So, thank you, Russ, again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, or approved. Jonathan.
The resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of a certiorari petition by Verizon, New York, as follows, set forth here in the record. And further resolved, that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount that totaled from the record, $40,564.99, to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is the first of two resolutions for tax certioraries, and they are backed up by a memo from our attorneys, Keenan Bean, regarding the negotiations that have led to this. Any comments?
I'm going to vote against this. I brought up several factors, which I've not gotten satisfactory answers to. Basically, to agree to this, we are agreeing to a valuation, which I have known, I guess, basis to disagree with, set back in 2004. But then, the valuations grow at less than half the regular valuations of the other properties, which include residential, so there may be a rationale that it shouldn't grow by quite this same amount as regular residential or the overall residential, or the overall property value increase for our village between 2004 and 2010. But I think a 50% discount is ridiculous. And until I have a better idea from our professionals, and I've railed against these certiorities because I honestly believe the system, people follow the system like they've done for the last 50 years, and are not looking at this stuff with a fresh eye, it just, it completely doesn't make sense to me. So, I'm going to vote against agreeing to this unless I get a better and more fulsome explanation from our assessor, and John Burkhart, the attorney. I'm going to ask that we table the next one because I just got the documentation for this this weekend. It seems more reasonable. However, I want to make sure I understand these numbers as well. So, on this one, I've had some discussion and dialogue, enough to say that I don't agree with it. And on the next one, I have not had any dialogue, so I don't know whether I agree with it or not, although it does seem more reasonable than this one.
So, do you want to consider a motion at table 24?
Table 20. We can table both of them. If you guys feel you have enough information, in favor of them, you can.
Patty, are we at any risk here in this settlement as currently proposed by delaying it two weeks?
You know, I can't answer that question. All I can tell you is I need an assessment role to do a budget.
I understand that.
So, it gets a little difficult if we can't get our assessor and our counsel to settle these things.
I mean, I understand that, but, I mean, as you know, we've all had some frustrations with the valuations that come out of this process, and the discussion is, it's clear that the numbers that we get from Keenan Bean are thoughtfully assembled by the same token. If it may be that we need to expend the effort to have John Burkhart and Jim Timmies here face-to-face in an executive session.
I actually think that's what we're supposed to do.
It would be helpful. I understand, and John and I went through the exercise of looking at equalization rates for the last, I don't know, 10 years.
We looked at it for every year, and they grow, they grow the value of this Horizon property at less than half the rate at which the equalization rate grew. And, you know, property in this town has grown, even if it's commercial, it's grown, in my opinion, at a higher rate than that. You know, maybe it shouldn't grow at the exact rate of the equalization rate because it is commercial, but, I mean, come on, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
I think what we don't have any confidence in right now is that they're just, and they may be pushing back hard enough, but I'm not sure we all think that. And we, you know, we're kind of on the front line here, they're not on the front line, they're in the support line, but it's hard being on the front line. I think we just need to know that they're fighting the fight as hard as we would fight the fight.
The job of the assessor is to defend your assessment role, so you do need to have confidence that that's happening.
Right. Well, we have had the assessor and our attorney here just a few weeks ago, but I think that the questions that were raised, and Jonathan's raised a lot of pressing questions, they may not have been prepared to answer fully at that session. And it, you know, probably would be a good idea to have them back in and talk to them first.
Sure, let's just move that then and move on with that.
Okay, so, both of you, you want a motion at table 24?
Aye, motion at table 24.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, table. And then, shall we move 25 and then table it?
Yes.
Okay.
Just put the 4 March.
What do you think, Judy?
Move it first, why don't we just table it before we move it?
You can certainly table that.
Why don't we move it and table it? Move it and table it.
Okay, resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorize the village attorney to proceed with the settlement of certiorari petition by Valvoline, Instant Oil, and Galena Associates LLC as follows. This is for a six-year period from 2005 to 2010. And further resolved, that the village treasurer is authorized to issue the applicable refunds in the amount of $23,965.74 to the petitioner's attorney upon receipt of an executed order from the court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the motion to table this?
Motion to table it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose table, and Patty, let's get, if we can get Jim and John in here for the next work session. Thank you. Steve, number 26.
Excuse me, resolved, that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bid playground equipment for Roselle Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe both this and the source of the funds?
That's a happier resolution. Yeah. We were able to secure several member item grants with the assistance of former Assemblyman Richard Brodsky, and that money has come in. We have about $19,900 available to us, and we've been meeting with the neighborhood association from the Roselle Park area, talking about replacing equipment there, and they have come up with a piece that they would like to see, that would replace the piece that we had taken out of that park. And the Parks and Rec Advisory Board had reviewed this as well, everybody's on board with it, and I'd like to just go out to bid for it because it's over the bid limit of $10,000. So, we'll put a bid together, go out for bids on the equipment.
And that it's going to be community-built and installed.
It should be, yeah. We'll put an alternate in to have it installed by, you know, the certified installer, but if it's too much money, we'll look for community effort to install it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. 27.
No.
Yeah?
27.
Yeah.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from the treasurer and deputy treasurer to attend the Munis Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, at a cost of approximately $3,300.
Is there a second?
Second.
Munis is the package we use for our accounting, billing, and financial management. It is kind of used by lots of municipalities across the country, and Pam Hoffman, our deputy treasurer, and Mary Schwartz, our treasurer, have attended annually the conference at which they learn more about the software and new releases and have the chance to speak directly to the software developers. The total cost is about $3,300, and that is included in our fiscal budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Jonathan.
28.
28, yeah.
The Board, the resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby appoint Scott Blaisdale, Blaisdale, excuse me, to the planning commission to fill the unexpired term of Matt White, said term to expire April 2013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott, for agreeing to serve on the planning commission. I think you'll be a great addition. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Normally, we interview these folks.
I just asked.
Why did we do this?
It's not a requirement to do it, and we are anxious to get this slot filled. A couple of people we talked to, have decided not to take this post, so.
Well, still, I'd like to meet them and say hello to them.
Okay, we certainly can have them in.
Yeah. I mean, I have no reason to believe otherwise, but Joe Rule we had in, I mean, I think everybody should.
Yes, no, I agree, I agree.
If we follow protocol, we should.
I do agree.
Attempt to follow.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. 29.
Resolved, that the Board of Trustees hereby appoints Joe Rule to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to fill the unexpired term of Marilyn Hall, said term to expire April 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joe Rule, for taking up that responsibility, and thank you, Marilyn, again, for many, many, many years of service above and beyond the call of duty in Parks and Rec. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 30, Steve.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments: To fund over-budget accounts from the engineers for contractual services, $100, to miscellaneous charges and debt service, from arts and culture and outside service, $800, to the teen center for overtime, from village hall, fuel expense of $2,329, to the recreation center, fuel expense, from the village hall, fuel expense and additional $1,648, to the recreation center utilities, miscellaneous contractual debt of $1,100 moved over to mailing contractual, and $3,318 contingency funds to unallocated insurance, for a total of $9,295.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Sorry.
Patty, teen center overtime? What is that?
There could be some recreation event that took place where, you know, there could have been some Friday night activity.
We don't really have a teen center. I don't, I don't.
No, it's just that it's a line they charge things to. Usually, that's Joe.
I just don't remember that line. I'm familiar with.
7310 is a teen center.
Teen center.
So, that would be the gym nights and things like that.
That'll be your budget this year, so.
That is my budget.
Yeah, that's why I'm not familiar with that line.
I don't, I don't, I always, that was always zeroed out because we.
All right, all in favor? Any new business?
Zero.
It's not zero anymore.
New business for discussion? We have a couple of matters to be discussing in work session after we go off the air, and among them is a PCTV board meeting, a meeting with the PCTV board to discuss their budget and their operations for the coming year. We've been having some discussions with the West Point Concert Band about whether it would be possible to have them come and present a free concert here in Pleasantville. It turns out that although they come for free, they come with some requirements that may not be free, and so that's the subject of discussion tonight. We're also reviewing the county's agreement for the use of the scanner voting machines, which has been a source of some conflict and controversy for villages that run their own elections.
We won that.
And just to remind you that there is a village election on Tuesday, March 15. Trustees Scarstad and Gerard are running for reelection unopposed, and village justice John Curley is running for election, with Joseph Targiotti also running for the village justice position. So, that's Tuesday, March 15. And lastly, we're also reviewing comments from the planning commission on two things, one of which was a. one of which was a model ordinance proposed by the county to be included in our zoning ordinance, which would create several requirements associated with affordable housing. And the second piece was the planning commission's review of a request by Laduka Auto, which is down on the Sawmill Parkway at Grant Street, for a possible zoning change that would permit them to sell used cars in that location. Both of those proposed changes in zoning were referred to planning as is our required procedure, and we've got bad comments from them for further discussion. So unless there's any further business, I thank you all for watching. Sorry for starting late. We look forward to seeing you again. Again, our next regular, our next work session is next Monday, the 7th of March. Our next regular meeting is Monday, March 14 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?